October 28, 2025, Lakeville Area District School Board Meeting. If you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with roll call, starting on my right.
Amber Cameron.
Brett Nicholson.
Paul Carbone.
Matt Swanson.
Michael Bowman.
Kim Baker.
Harley Anderson.
Brian Thompson.
Are there any additions or amendments to be made to the agenda?
Chair.
Director Baker.
I'm requesting to add an item to the agenda for discussion.
Okay.
Based on what I brought to the board last time, which was a resolution for special education, the board asked me to do some work on that, and I did that, so I want to bring the resolution back with an attached plan for special education.
All right, and this is for discussion?
Yep.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right, there being a second, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, all those in favor of adding the Director Baker's resolution, and we're going to discuss the plan as well, to the discussion at Section 6D, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is added. Any other amendments? If there are none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that one addition. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Being a first by Director Cameron, a second by Director Carbone, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Superintendent Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good news for Lakeville Area Schools, October 28th, the Lakeville South High School Marching Band delivered their strongest performance to date on Saturday, October 11th, at the Youth in Music Marching Band Championships held at U.S. Bank Stadium. Competing against 37 bands from across the Midwest, Lakeville South won second place in Class AAA and was one of five Minnesota bands to advance to the evening finals. In the finals, the band showcased their skill and dedication, earning fourth place in music and color guard, and seventh place overall. So congratulations to the Lakeville South Marching Band. Lakeville Area Schools has launched a new social media photo series called Faces of 194. Throughout the year, this series will highlight what's happening inside our schools and give our community a glimpse into the daily life of our students and staff. Be sure to follow us on Facebook and Instagram to see the most recent highlights and to catch more Faces of 194 stories as the year goes on. You can read more about the wonderful things happening in our school district at ISD194.org/news. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We're now going to move into public comments. The board will open up the floor for 30 minutes to allow the public to address the board with comments and concerns. In order to participate in public comment, individuals must have registered in advance using the form provided on our website by noon on the Monday prior to our scheduled meeting. There will be no board response during the session. Public comments framed as complaints and/or concerns about students and/or staff are not appropriate in public forum due to data privacy laws. These comments should be addressed to the administration outside of a public meeting. Likewise, complaints about school board members should be privately directed to the board chair and/or superintendent. If your comments stray into that realm, I will ask you to stop, and the video feed will be stopped as well, so please do not do that. No formal action will be taken on a topic presented during public comment, but as necessary, the administration will follow up with the appropriate personnel on any concerns that need to be individually addressed. Also, if necessary, the board will follow up during board communications at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. The board will provide a signal when the participant has 30 seconds left. Please try to keep audience noise to a minimum so everyone can hear what is being said. There's actually only one individual signed up, so if Jamal Hassan would come up. Unless he's changed his mind. Jamal, go on once, go on twice. All right, that will be the conclusion of our public comment, I guess. We'll move on to consideration of approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board member want to pull out of the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Here's a motion, is there a second? All right, a motion by Director Carbone, and a second by Director Nicholson to approve the consent agenda at 4A through E. Any discussion? If there's none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Moving along, reports and discussions. I'll get us kicked off with the JPA. School board members, and it's on the Board Book 2 as a copy of the proposed amendment. The board has had a chance to review it. If you have any questions? I just had one I'll start with. I know that we're, this is an agreement between us and the city, the school board, or school district and the city. City council meeting was yesterday. Did they have any amendments that they're looking at to the agreement?
Toul Marchionne, who is the park director, let me know today that they had a discussion about it, but there were no actual changes. So the plan would be, obviously, school board last night, I'm sorry, city council last night, school board tonight for informational, and then depending on any feedback, it would go back to the city council for approval on November 3rd, and then come back to the school board for approval on November 11th.
Okay. Anyone have any other specific questions? I had a question about, if no one else, I'll go again, but Section 6.1, it looks like there are certain services that the city was providing before that are being removed now in this agreement. Is it because they're not needed, or is that just a negotiated revision?
Yeah, it can be two different things. Since the last time that this was updated was 2013 for official approval, there have been a number of either facilities or change in use of facilities that are just no longer appropriate. One of the good examples are the two ice arenas that used to be by the old district office, by McGuire Middle School, and those were essentially given back to the city. So some of that maintenance is no longer needed. Some of the other aspects are because of the city essentially requesting no longer to maintain some district fields and grounds to remove those items as well.
Any other questions? Director Thompson?
Yeah, we recently received some emails around the need to have parental staff to be in place for, I think, some association use inside our facilities for monitoring of the halls and stuff of that nature. And so I noticed in this agreement in Section 3, it says additional expenditures. Both parties agree that no custodial or facility attendant wages or overtime will be charged. So is that something where our, we are, we will be staffing and then we will be absorbing those costs, or are we not staffing anyone, or like, how does, or does this not apply?
It mostly does not apply unless there actually were some issues, per se. And so we have good, open lines of communication with the city about the rules, and they've been fantastic for using our facilities. Hopefully, we've done the same. We have our normal operations for supervision, custodial, and like building supervision. Those would stay in place, and that's what we are not charging for. If for some reason that there was a need that we identified for, you know, additional supervision or support, those are the items that we could charge for, but it's just more the typical building supervision, custodial, overtime, that neither party is charging the other one for. Does that help?
It does and it does not, but I'll do my best to track. I guess what I'm asking for then is just making sure that we've got consistency between what we are charging, tier one, tier two, tier three, with for our facility use, as well as what the city, as well as the city. And so that's all I'm asking for, if there isn't, to ensure that we've got consistency between the both. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I can assure that, I mean, Lucas oversees that area for operations, and I can forward that on to Devin, who actually is the one that has the communication with actual users.
And this is separate, I mean, this is separate from those groups. I think the distinction here is, you know, we're getting, you know, our consideration is we're getting access to facility, city facilities as well in exchange for allowing them to use ours, but if there are additional fees, Section 3 of the agreement says that they will pay those fees. And similarly, we will have to pay their, we'll have to pay additional fees that we caused to the city if there's damage done or extra snow removal or trash removal. I do like that you took out most of Section 7, which seemed to kind of give our buildings to the city after a certain time, which seemed odd.
Yeah, that has a long, long history, and yeah, that was kind of an item that we thought, you know what, this actually can hopefully simplify things at any district facilities, people have one place to go to instead of come to us, go to the city, register through them, and oh, by the way, we have some other additional rules. So it's one stop shop, hopefully.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, we'll see you in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Thanks.
Onto the audit.
Chair Swanson, our school board members, Superintendent Michael Bowman. Tonight, yes, we have CLA, we have Chris Knudsen, partner from CLA, here to present along with Troy Gabler. He was very instrumental in working on our audit, and I want to give a little shout out to my staff, we have them in the back, worked very hard to get our annual report done again, and we're very pleased with the results and where our financial position is.
Thank you very much, Bill. My name is Chris Knulpick, I'm a principal with Clifton-Larson Allen, this is our first year working with the district again after a couple of year break, and I have Troy Gabler with us as well, he was the manager on the district's audit. So we're here to provide preliminary results for the audit. The reason I say preliminarily is the, the school district is subject to a single audit, that means we have to audit your federal grants. What we use to audit that is called the compliance supplement. That is issued every year, typically in late spring, April, May, June, somewhere in there. That is not issued yet this year, so we cannot final issue any single audit report.
Why is that, sir?
I don't know.
Okay.
We do have a draft supplement that we're working off of, so the federal government, if you want to say, was gracious enough to give us a draft supplement, but we are not able to actually issue until there's a final version out there. So that is the process we're going through right now, so that's why.
Director Thompson.
Can we just make sure we clarify, you do not have a final version because of why?
Because of the compliance supplement not being issued by the federal government.
And then why is it not issued by the federal government?
They're behind in the process.
They're behind, they're behind in the process.
Okay, and then what's the ETA for something like that?
We have no clue, actually.
And then why is that so?
Because we are at the, kind of the mercy of the Federal Office of Management and Budget who issues that document, and they, they don't have a set deadline for issuing it.
Okay.
And I believe the state is also aware of this, and they have moved the, kind of the deadline to get us the, them the single audit results to the end of March. If the compliance supplement is not issued prior to the end of the calendar year, we will issue the financial statements separately, so you meet your statutory deadlines for the financials, and then we'd issue the single audit later as soon as we're able to legally do so. So you'll meet all your statutory deadlines, and we're trying to issue them together ideally. If that doesn't work, we will just separate the two, and you'll hit your financial statement deadline with the state.
Director Cameron.
Is this an unusual circumstance? Okay.
It is. The last time that the, the federal government issued a compliance supplement this late would have been back in 2020 when the, when COVID happened. And that year, when they finally did eventually issue the compliance supplement, they automatically extended the deadline for submitting your single audit, I think, all the way till, typically it's nine months, I think they gave you 18 months or something crazy like that. So we're hoping it doesn't get to be that level of delay this time, but we just wanted to let you know, as Troy mentioned, we will, we do have a plan in place to make sure statutory compliance requirements are met for the district. It would just be that single audit piece for the federal government. So as we go through the slide deck tonight, we typically, Troy and I, like to say, if you have questions, you can ask them as we go, otherwise there's an opportunity at the end. So we're going to go through some required communications that we have as your external auditors. We have some audit results, both the, kind of where are we looking at as far as are there any internal control comments or single audit comments that we have currently? We have several slides on financial statement results, and then at the end, we like to just keep the board aware of any upcoming governmental accounting standards. So you'll see that GASB acronym used quite a bit, that stands for Governmental Accounting Standard Board. So that's the standard-setting body that tells you what your financial statement should be looking like and what, how to recognize revenue and those types of things. So as we go as far as required communications, so this really is just that reminder that an audit provides reasonable, not absolute assurance as to the, as to the numbers that you're going to see in your financial statements. The reason we say reasonable and not absolute, absolute would mean that we audited 100% of your transactions, that's just not feasible, both on time constraints and just a monetary constraint. We also look at the accounting estimates that are included in your financial statements. Our responsibility as your auditors is to make sure they're reasonable and supported. And with that, we also want to let you know that there are two what we consider significant estimates that we want to just make sure we call out to the board. Very common when it comes to school districts in Minnesota, one is going to be the other post-employment benefit liability, and then also your, related to self-insurance, your incurred but not reported liability that gets reported in your statements. Those are typically both derived using actuaries and that type of information, so we don't have any concerns over those, we just want to make sure we call them out to the board. This year, as part of the audit, we are also implementing two new governmental accounting standards. The first one is Statement Number 101, that's related to compensated absences. So compensated absences is the accrued vacation time, sick time, comp time, that's reported in your financial statements. Right now, what that was historically typically based on is what the actual potential cash liability is to the district if somebody was to retire or separate in good standings. Understatement Number 1, it added another kind of layer of complexity in there, saying, what's just the likelihood that an employee is going to use it while they're employed? Not necessarily have it paid out, but what's the likelihood that they're going to actually use those accrued balances? So that's what we looked at this year. It was not a material change, or it was, it was a material change to the financial statements. So you will see within your financial statements when you get it, you're going to see a restatement on the bottom of it. That restatement is going to say, we had a new accounting policy we adopted, it was big enough to where we just didn't want to adjust it through current year operations, so we adjust your beginning net position for that, so.
What constitutes big enough?
In this case, it went from around like 6 million to 18 million, but the number that is large enough matter, it just changes year to year based on how your assets and revenues by each column shake out.
So, but, you know, it's one of those things that we're seeing this year across the board. When we adopted this standard, cities and counties adopted this back for December 31st, it's school district turns now, so we're seeing these liabilities increase kind of across the board.
And that is come, the other larger school districts we have in the metro that we work with also had a very similar increase. It's not unique to your district, and it only shows through the governmental activities, so the government-wide where you have your pension liabilities, so it won't affect a lot of what you probably use to make decisions for the school.
And then the second one we adopted was Statement Number 102. Statement 102 was just a note disclosure statement, so it was not a lot of additional calculations. So what it wanted us to do is it wants local governments to disclose more information about your, if you want to say, your regulatory operating environment. So what that would be is if you had bargaining units that were outside of a contract, and there could be a potential for a strike or something like that, if you were meeting and exceeding your debt limit according to state statute, those types of things is what they want governments to, governments to disclose now. So, so you'll see a couple extra note disclosures in there about just some of that kind of high-level debt limits, those types of things, but nothing that was, you know, going to be shocking or earth-shattering for the district when you see that note. As part of the audit, we also need to make sure that you're aware, we have some what we call uncorrected or past adjustments, so these were, we're, right now, currently under your pension liabilities, that requires some pretty significant calculations between what we consider deferred inflows, deferred outflows, so we're going to kind of get some of the nuts and kind of the weeds of governmental accounting, but we had some minor differences, and this happens a lot of times when there's a change in accounting firms, we calculate them a little bit differently a lot of times. So you'll see the amounts on there was, you know, 3.5 million for deferred inflows, 1.6 million in your net, net position were understated, you know, those types of things. They were not large enough to where it would require a restatement or anything like that, so what we call is we're just adjusting those and correcting them through current year operations. So that kind of puts you into a little bit of perspective, we, you know, we talked, the increase in compensated absences was material, so we're doing that, these are smaller, and we're able to correct those through current year. And then the other, the second one that we have is related to bond premiums. Governmental accounting standards was, is very specific. When you have bond premiums and discounts, they're supposed to be amortized on what they call effective interest. So what that is, is your amortization on an annual basis, mere similarly to your interest as far as a percentage of your premium that gets amortized each year. Historically, most governments used to just amortize those straight lines, so if you had a million dollars of premium, over 10 years, you take $100,000 each year. But standards actually say it should be effective interest, so this year it was just a cleanup of that, just to get those in line with what proper governmental accounting standards should be to amortize them over effective interest, so. Nothing that was an internal control issue or anything like that that would, that would come to a material weakness, significant deficiency, just some cleanup on that side. Next one, we'd want to let you know if we have any corrected or actual audit adjustments, which we had none, so very positive. The information that we got from, from Bill and Jack and the rest of the finance team, we're all in, in very good condition, and, and we didn't have any adjustments to it. We'd also let you know if we had any disagreements or difficulties in performing the audit, we didn't. I typically say no news is good news on that part, if we had a difficulty or disagreement, we'd let you know about it before a public meeting. As far as the actual audit results, as I'll, as I kind of want to just reiterate, these are preliminary because they're not an issued financial statement. So as of right now, the financial statements will receive an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. That unmodified is the word that we use to say clean, so that's the, that's the word you want to see in your audit report. So very good news there. Since the district is also a single audit, we also have to issue what we call a Yellow Book Compliance Report, so that would let you know if there is any material violations of laws, regulations, contracts, or grants that could have a material impact on the district. There's nothing that is any concern there, so that's a clean report as well. Then we also look at your internal controls, as I mentioned, we had nothing that would require to be disclosed as a material weakness, significant deficiency, or anything there. So overall, very positive, very clean results for the district. So really, that should be applauded to everybody at the district that plays a part in, in just day-to-day activities from processing invoices and receipts to bank recs and, and all the financial reporting aspects as well. As I mentioned, we did look at yours, we tried to do as much of the single audit as we can, using that draft compliance supplement that's out there, so that once the final issued version is out there, our goal, hopefully, if there's no changes, is really just to basically take your grant, compare it side by side, and say, no changes, we've done all the work, and we can issue the report. So with the, with that, we have one item under the Child Nutrition Program related to procurement. Right now, that is listed as a potential material weakness, that may actually downgrade to a significant deficiency, so, or upgrade if you want to look at it, depending which way you look at it. So material weakness is the highest potential comment, significant deficiency is one step below that. So it may actually improve as we go through our final review processes on that. So what that was is we have one out of the 13 different procurements that we tested that were, we're just missing some documentation about why a vendor was selected and that type of stuff. No concerns over actual allowability of spending or anything like that, it's just more of a documentation issue on our side, so. And then we also look at Minnesota legal compliance as part of the audit as well, and that, we did not have any compliance issues or anything like that related to legal compliance as well. So overall, very clean report for the district, just the one item related in the Child Nutrition Program, so. If there's no questions on anything right now, I'll turn it over to Troy to go through some of the, some of the financial results.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chris. And maybe just to put some of that too into context for what we see at other districts and compare, you have very few findings in terms of like internal control items. A lot of districts, we'd usually have an item or two, so that's a very good thing, that means you guys have good controls, we're not seeing big adjustments. And the procurement item you have for single audits is probably the most common thing we have, and it's very rare not to have a legal compliance issue, which you do not have. So maybe a bit of a highlight there that sometimes I don't know if the, you might not know the comparisons or what we see across different clients, I'd like to share that. And then, of course, maybe just to build off of what Chris said, having a first-year client where we come back, a lot of times, there's probably more bumps in the audit process. Went quite smoothly in terms of, you know, we did audit this four years ago, but anytime there's a transition, it usually goes a little bit less smooth, so I think overall, very good process. All right, so I'm going to share some of the numbers and results with you. This slide is just showing kind of the change in the general education formula allowance, and this is really, you're getting this based off of your, you know, student counts. I think the highlight here is if you look at the percent increase, if you were to take a, you know, look at what inflation has been over the past five, 10 years, you would notice it doesn't keep up. So the important thing here is, obviously, you can levy for more money, and you can build, you know, up your student base to the extent possible, you know, if you have any charter schools or something that you're competing with. But ultimately, that is a gap that, as a board, you have to deal with regularly, getting worse, and so we like to point that out because it's a funding thing that you work through pretty regularly. Here we have the student enrollment. This is a very positive result, you can see over the last five years, you've added 1,000 students about. Being in a growing district is nice in terms of, but brings its own set of problems. You might have to look at closing buildings, but you might have to look at how to utilize space, and keeping up with hiring needs can certainly be difficult in a growing community. Here we have the general fund revenue sources. This is really just to highlight the breakout of your general fund revenues. You can see year over year, for the most part, the percentage of the total is pretty much the same. While they do grow steadily over the past five years, that's really in line because state and federal tends to follow your student count, so as you increase students, you typically are going to increase your funding. And expenditures, this is a great highlight, I think, for the district in that you can see about 3% is used for debt service, you have 2% for administration, and there's a couple support services there, but the bulk of the money is really going to supporting the buildings and the teaching and the programming going on at the district. But the bulk of the money is really going to supporting the buildings and the teaching and the programming going on at the district. And so I think people like to see that, you know, a large portion of the money is really going to serving the community and students. Here this is.
Director Nicholson.
Could you just go back quick? Can you give us a comparison on other districts that you see? I mean, are we similar, lower, higher?
So a lot of the ones that have, so if you look at the top, the one percent, the three percent and two and three, so the first four across, where that adds up to a little under 10%. Usually that's a little bit closer to like fifteen to sixteen. Some districts they get highest twenty. I mean, part of it depends on how you kind of allocate out your administrative costs. So certainly that's a piece. But anytime you see over seventy five percent kind of go into instructional, special ed and regular instruction, I'll kind of highlight that. If it's below that, I just present it as here, here's your split out and I don't necessarily think it's a highlight. So. Here we have expenditures by object code. And this is just really showing the breakout for the general fund of your various buckets of expenses and how they compared to budget. I think the highlight here would really be, of course, you're spent four point seven million under what you'd budgeted. And the big chunk of that is really from salaries and benefits from having some open positions that ideally would have been filled and paid. And then supplies and materials and capital expenditures for the most part offset, it just kind of depends on if you capitalize at which bucket that falls into. Here on this slide, we have the financial position of the general fund, otherwise known as fund balance for governments. And I think the three year increase you can see from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five is very good. I think if you look at that as a percentage of your overall fund balance, you basically have about a month and a half, I think, of operations or about twelve point eight percent of your expenditures and fund balance. That's a huge improvement, of course, over the last few years. We'd encourage you to continue as you're able to build that up. We typically think about twenty to twenty five percent is a good goal to have, although sometimes you do see higher, lower, depending on what you're dealing with.
And that's for all funds, not just unassigned fund balance?
In this case, it is all funds and I do have a, I do have a slide that'll break out unassigned as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Here we have the audited fund balance of the general fund. This is just kind of showing the different breakout that you have for the restrictions. You can see here, we also have the beginning and ending and the assigned amount, as you basically have pointed out there. So you can see that that is the two point four million, last year was three point six. But your unassigned is not the total of the twenty five million, it's the thirteen point four million you see above that. And that's really what's not restricted for a particular use that you could have to use for any reason or contingency. And here this breaks it into percentages. So there's the twelve point eight percent for total fund balance and the six point eight percent is what you have for unassigned. And so again, definitely important to continue to build that up, but definitely an improvement over the last few years.
Director Thompson.
All right. Yeah, just, just to clarify again, so you know, we've been focused very clearly on the unassigned fund balances, sitting at about thirteen point five million. I believe that's roughly, I think, like six point nine percent of, oh, six point eight, sorry, six point eight percent of, of where we need to be. What is, so we, we made drastic changes over the past two and a half, three years to get it, to get it words at with it being like negative point two in, in twenty twenty three. What, what is, I know that we had, we were downgraded from, for, for our credit, I believe, a couple of years back. Well, like what number, like where do we need to get to? Because right now as a board, we've set a policy to set it at 10% for our unassigned fund balance, which is different from the whole fund balance. And so the unassigned fund balance, we've targeted that, targeted that to be about 10% as, as a policy goal. What number do we need to get to, to kind of like recalibrate our credit score?
I, you know, and in, obviously we don't provide the credit scores, but what we see in a healthy district that doesn't have a downgraded credit score. Part of it really depends on how you do your assignments for fund balance too. But you know, because if you have 10% of unassigned fund balance and then you had 15% assigned to very specific things, that could look healthy from a, somebody reviewing the financial statement standpoint. But also again, I think in general, getting to the 20 to 25% is what we recommend. I mean, then you kind of have a quarter year of, you know, reserves. So then when the federal government shuts down, right, you don't have to potentially borrow or anything like that if you do have a funding issue. So.
Director Thompson.
I think the 10% is of our two hundred and nine million dollars annual expenditure ballpark, or two hundred and five, we, we want about 20 million. And I think that's about three months worth of operating expenditures if things shut down. And, and so if our restricted fund balance, and I see this as eight point nine, and the not, the non-spendable fund balance is at, you know, seven hundred and sixty five thousand, that may, that may not grow. And, or that may stay the same. But I think what we control the most is going to be our unassigned fund balance. So we need to get that thirteen point five ideally to roughly 20 million dollars, which is 10% of our expenditures. And then our restricted fund balance can, can like fluctuate based on whatever we get from the state and whatever is restricted to where we need to go. Is that, that, that would be kind of what I'm hearing as, as the ideal target.
Director Anderson.
Yeah, I know districts kind of take different approaches based on their size and like you said, different factors. So I guess I'm wondering, last time, I know the Moody's score has been, right, it's Moody's. That, that score gets kind of like what drives if we're going out for a bond or something like that. So I'm kind of curious from the superintendent, like if we were to go out for a bond for something in the last cycle that we did that, I think we were in a pretty good position. So do you see a certain amount that we need in our?
That's, that's one factor. What my experience with, especially with Moody's has always been strategic plan and utilization of your funds in accordance with your strategic plan and your growth and tax base fidelity. Those are the three things. Now, an unassigned fund balance also is an indicator, but it's, it's not the leading indicator for, in my experience with these, and I think I've done about seventeen of them. So an unassigned fund balance at 10% is a great place to be for a school district and wouldn't, wouldn't push back on that. That's not the deciding factor on Moody's. In fact, in the time I've been in the district, we were able to get our rating increased with a five percent standard on unassigned fund balance. And after I left, it went down. But I think we are, we show a trajectory that I think would be favorable with Moody's.
And I think the key too is, you know, even though, you know, whether it's 10%, 15, whatever you're shooting for, you know, gradually building up to that is the key and trending in the right direction. And then once you have that, then you can decide, okay, do we want to keep building that up? Are we going to utilize that to lower levies or can we do something else for me? You know, providing additional, you know, stuff to students or teachers and whatever you have. So I think a lot of that just comes down to the values of the board and the school district itself. Because as you noted, there are a lot of different theories as to should we have our own money? Should we be bonding and how that plays and people's risk tolerance for that? So. And I think also being at a growing school district, it's also very different than one that is kind of matured and dealing with a, not a growing student body. Because you don't have the projection of increased revenues to deal with. So it's way more important you keep contingency funds than if you know you're in a growing area. So that's definitely something to keep in mind as well.
Director Thompson.
And just to share for the rest of the board, I'm just looking at our 2013, 2014 budget. We had about 10,170 students at that time. We, our, our annual budget was a hundred and two million and we are, in our savings account, we had five point five million. So for some, some numbers.
Here we have the food service fund. So this is just again, showing a five year trend. I think the important thing here is if you look at the ending fund balance at three point eight million, that's about thirty five, thirty eight percent of the expenditures. That's a very healthy food service fund, especially with the now fixed revenues in most cases with the state kind of offering the free lunches. Not every district has been able to operate that effectively and profitably in a way that it pays for itself. So for whoever's involved in running that program and continuing to not see that drop significantly year to year, I think that is commendable. A lot of times we'll see the general fund kind of supplementing that, especially kind of post COVID. So that's great to see.
Director Cameron.
With that, I might be off base here, but we have to be under a certain threshold though with a, with a balance for that, correct? Otherwise we're out of compliance with the state. Is that, is that the right fund, Bill?
Was it ninety days?
It's back to three months.
So we're, we're good. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yep. Yeah, I think the key there is it's not negative every year and you're not supplementing it with essentially other funds that's paying for itself, which is great. Here we have the community service fund. Here you kind of cut even on this year to year. I think a big factor in that and kind of working with the school district really pertains to the ability to staff some of those positions, to provide the classes and things that you are doing to charge for them. And so I think as positions are filled, that will be self sustaining. All right. And then I'm going to turn it back over to Chris to talk about the upcoming GASB standards.
Thank you very much, Troy. So any other questions on financial results? Otherwise we just have a, a slide here just to really keep the board informed of what's coming down the pipeline as far as accounting standards. So looking at fiscal year 26 is audit now, so we're not quite done with 25, but we're already starting to think about 26. And again, there's going to be two new governmental accounting standards that are going to have to be adopted by the district. The first one, statement one oh three. This one, probably the most significant impact to the district is really going to be rewriting some of that very front section of your financial statements. So it's called the management discussion analysis. So the statement number one oh three is just kind of reworking, what are the actual topics that government should include in that? And how should they be comparative as far as more, they want to have more policy driven type discussion. Right now, your management discussion, along with all the other governments that we audit, really just says, here was this year, here's last year, here's why it increased. We had vacant positions, we had this or we had that. Now they want, now they want districts and governments to actually incorporate more of, is this going to be a financial trend going forward? What's the policy behind, or what's the policy or what's that strategic vision behind the government and what's our goals long term for that? So that's going to probably be the biggest change for the district on that one. Statement number one oh four, that's another one that's just going to be a note disclosure statement. So statement number one oh four is really cleaning up how we should be reporting some of these new assets that had been essentially created over the last couple of years. So over the last couple of years, we've had right to use assets for leases, right to use assets for subscription, so subscription based IT arrangements. If you had any public, private partnerships, various things like that. All of those specific standards didn't really tell you how to disclose them, they just said you had to disclose them. So statement one oh four is actually just bringing it all together and saying they all are going to be disclosed in a certain way so that there's comparability across governments across the country. So really those are the only two standards, as I mentioned, one oh three is going to be primarily the biggest impact for the district. One oh four should be a fairly easy one, it's just kind of reorganizing where stuff is at.
Chris, in your time as a professional doing this work, has GASB ever had a year where they didn't issue a change?
Technically during COVID, well, actually they still technically issued a statement during COVID, but it was essentially a statement saying, we're going to delay everything by a year or two. That's probably the only time. So I've been doing this now for about 22 years. When I first came into the industry, we were on statement number 34. So now we're, that 70, 70 statements later over 22 years?
And if you look at the last like four or five years, three of the standards added like three significant new audit areas, right? I mean, you know, 10 years ago, you get like pensions, but now we have, you have to look at your custodial funds differently. You have the leases, subscriptions, lessor type situations creates a new receivable. So a lot of years, there's been significant amounts of work that go into implementing that or the grouped assets and things like that. So this will actually be pretty easy, hopefully for the next year or two without, you know, jinxing that, but.
I'm glad you said that, Troy, because what I, what I'm sharing with everybody is that the finance teams have to react to this.
Yes.
And the good news is you get the information ahead of time. The not so good news is you got to figure out how to due process procedure adjustment in order to account for that. And then if you change out your auditor in, you know, after two or three years, you got that challenge as well. So hats off again to the team that, that does that. And as you know, this is something that happens year in and year out.
Yes.
So with that, you know, we're welcome to any other questions or comments or concerns or anything like that. Otherwise we would just kind of reiterate the thanks to the entire staff that we work with here at the district. They were, were great, as Troy mentioned, kind of in that transition year back to CLA this year. The fact that we're still sitting at this board meeting with, you know, what would have been issued reports if the federal government would have cooperated with us, we're sitting in a pretty good spot.
Director Thompson.
Yeah, can you, can you provide again additional clarity for me? Because I'm not, I don't think I fully understand the compensated absences, the one on one. Obviously with the six million and the eighteen million dollars, that's a, that's a big 12 million dollar delta. So I don't, I didn't see it impacting this school year or this year's budget that ended in 2025. What does that mean for next year?
So it, the weird thing about this type of liability is with how the government does its financial reporting, you know, it's, nothing's changing in terms of the cash outlay. So your budgeting will stay the same because the funds that you use to manage the school district aren't going to be impacted because it's only booked on the level, like the government wide level where you have like your pensions and your fixed assets and things like that. But the change was really, you know, in terms of previously, if I had, you know, a hundred hours sick bank that I'd get paid out upon, you know, leaving the district or being terminated, we would accrue that hundred hours. But if you had a thousand hours where only a hundred would get paid out, you will still would have only accrued previously that hundred hours. Where now, if you have a thousand hours, you accrue the hundred hours, you look at that other 900 and you say, hmm, I wonder if it's more likely than not, they'll use some of that. And that's a lot of work to go through for the finance and work with actuaries and get them that data. And so it blows up the liability because it's really booking something that's just bank sick time or comp time or things that haven't been booked in the past. But truly your agreement with the unions and employees did not change. They're just trying to make it more comparable entity to entity to look at those and capture some of that.
So then are you reviewing our contracts, our employee contracts? And then are you, is your firm the one that's making the determination whether it's more likely or not, or is?
Oh, no. That is a, that is a determination made by the, both the districts and the actuary they work with. That is a management estimate and it would be inappropriate as your auditor for us to make that. But we do provide guidance as far as like what we see maybe and how to look at some of the figures. But we do look at your contracts and we make sure it's reasonable and that we're not drawing incorrect conclusions. And we test all the data going in to make sure they're using that. So.
And just, just so I'm clear, you're, you're still saying that it shouldn't be a concern or we need to go and account for 12 million dollars more of expenditures?
No, correct. It's not, again, it's not, it's booked on the statement with your long term liability. It's kind of like, think of it like your net pension liability. It's not like you're making new pension contributions, it's just depending on the fund, how funded it is. In this case, you're not really making an outlay unless everybody chooses to take all their sick time tomorrow, right? Which typically doesn't happen, right? But that would be where the liability would kick in, right?
Any other questions? Director Cameron.
On the slide where you showed our fund balance over the last like six years, it was quite a ways back. You are, that one, yeah. You are our auditor for, CLA was the auditor, right, for some of those earlier years?
Twenty one.
In those situations, or just in 21?
I think 21 on this slide would have only been 21.
Well, and 25, yeah.
Yeah, right. So, okay, my question might not, might be a moot point then, but I was curious, if you saw that downward trajectory, would you raise alarm bells typically?
We would appropriately come here like we are now and say, hey, this is something you really would like to watch. You don't want to end up in a situation where you can't come up with funds for contingencies and be forced to borrow. That is what we would come to with if we saw that trajectory. We certainly would never come here and tell you, hey, this is what you need to be doing because everybody's in a different scenario. And you really know the district best and what you're dealing with. I mean, if you have a building, just go down and you have to fix it, you might have to spend down your fund balance and build it back up, right? To serve students. I mean, sometimes you have just these huge weird things happen. But yeah, we would certainly highlight that as something, just like with the community service fund, we're highlighting, if you staff that and it's self sufficient, you won't have to subsidize that and that your food service fund is very healthy.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much for letting us come out and present.
On to Mr. Holmgren.
Good evening.
More finances.
Just going to take a few minutes now, we talked about 25, now we want to talk about 26. We're just, just getting the year started. We do have final numbers as of September, so it's really only about one month into the school district. And we have expenses that happen during the summer, but, but they're very small. that happen during the summer, but, but they're very small. But just to give you an idea of what's happening with our, with our budget. So, when we look at our revenues, you can see that that's the blue line starting up, coming up through September there. And we are collecting more revenues at this point in time than we have in the last couple of years. We feel very good about that. It puts us in a very good cash position. Most of these funds coming in a little earlier are state funds. So, we're very pleased with that. Again, remember, this is really only one month in, so it's hard to make true comparisons. But when we look at our, now, this is looking at all our funds, okay? If you look at that blue line, again, that is fiscal '26, so our, our new year that we just got started. And you can see that every single area is in a really good situation. I want to point out, you see in pupil support, it's almost to the right side of the chart, you see pupil support. You see that one is up of the, up a little bit. And what we're seeing in that area, that is a trans, that special ed transportation, we're a little more happening there than we anticipated. So, this will be an area where we look very hard during the revised budget. This is probably a place that's going to be tweaked a little bit and increased a little bit to make sure that we come in at the end of the year in the right place. When we switch over and look at the optic side, now, this is entirely general fund. And what I, what I want to point out here, again, we are running a little lower in almost every single area. And you see the supplies and materials, though, that are up, up a little bit. And this is a timing issue. Like I said, this is only one month in, so it's, it's hard to really take a true comparison. But it's really a timing of making purchases. Our buildings, some of our buildings are purchasing a little sooner, some of their items than they have in the past. And that's really what's, what's driving this right here. You'll see that level out as we get into future months. And we switch over and look at the program side. Again, you can see in that pupil support area where that's up at 81 compared to, you know, 73 last year. That is that transfer, that's that transportation piece which we're looking at. And then, way on the right side, you see, oh, that's a little higher. Now, what we, we dug back through, through this, and what this is, this was actually a coding error. We have an expenditure in the wrong area, and it's not supposed to be there. So, you'll see that repair itself. We've already made the, the entries in, in October to take care of that, so that'll be going down. So, I feel very pleased with our, where our budget is starting out this year.
Director Thompson?
Can you provide commentary on community ed? Like, that's a layer.
Community ed, I mean, as you see, most of our community ed is, it's in a different fund, right? But here, in the general fund, you'll see community ed, it's just been here the last couple of years. And that's the unemployment, the summer unemployment that we have to pay for, that we get reimbursed for, okay? And we cannot run that through Fund Four, it has to run through Fund One. And again, this is a timing issue. Those last two years, that, that expenditure was made the first week of October, and this year, it was the last week of September. So, you're seeing the expenditure earlier on this chart. Next month, you'll see a straight line across, because they were almost the exact same amounts as the year before.
Director Carbone?
Yeah, Bill, fiscal and fixed cost, 37% in '25, and it bounces up about eight, creeping on 9% in '26. What, what is creating that?
That's what I had just mentioned a second ago, that we have a coding error, and it's in the insurance area.
Oh, that's the part, okay, very good.
We have some, we have our, our workman's comp insurance got put here, and it's really a benefit, and it has to be moved. So, it has been moved, and this has been repaired.
Okay. So, what do you think that number's going to be, then?
It's a, it's 37%.
It's going to be, so it's going to be...
Well, next year, next, next month will be a little bit higher, because we'll have another month. But it's flat.
Okay, but that's the point, it's going to be pretty flat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Director Cameron?
Just a point of clarification. Given the audit report saying that about 90% of our funds go towards direct student support, either through buildings or staffing, the reason we're seeing low numbers right now is just because in the summer, we don't spend those funds in the same way, right? I just, this makes it look like...
Yeah, I, you know, I guess that's a...
We're spending, right?
That's a very good example, because you'll see, you know, elementary and secondary, vocational, special ed, those are relatively small numbers, because that is only one month. Where you see the admin, direct support, those are people who work year-round.
Yeah.
So, there are three months of expenditures in those, in those first couple of columns.
Okay. So, this is not, this is only one quarter that we're looking at, just to emphasize?
It's a quarter, but it's really only one month.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So, I just wanted to show this again. We feel good about how our fund balance has, has rebounded. At this point, the budget is projected to be at 7.3 at the, at June of this next year. We'll be working, now revising our budget for the current year. As we, now, we know who everybody we've hired and so forth, so we'll bring all those updated numbers to you here. And it'll be a couple of months, but we'll see how that number will change. Any questions?
Director Thompson?
Yeah, so the 7.3 number doesn't look super favorable. When I look at the past two years, that we'd be able to make enhanced adjustments from 0 to 3, 3 to 6, and then, like, .5.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not going to see a 3% change in our fund balance going through '26. There have been a lot of changes into this year with new staffing and so forth. So, we will not, well, I'm, I'm expecting that fund balance to increase, but it will not increase by 3%.
By 3%, okay.
Are you seeing any change in our insurance fund? I know that was something that we talked about two weeks ago.
We're also watching that very closely. Again, we're only one month in. As of last month, yeah, we still are down another couple hundred thousand dollars. But we're meeting with them regularly. It's one of those things where we, you know, as we get our year started, we really can't change anything to a good next year, just like we talked about our staffing. We can't change our rates on our insurance until we get our renewal here in the spring.
So, I guess, yeah, that would be my next question. I mean, that, that amount could affect our unassigned fund balance, because we could have to, you know, adjust some funds or subsidize that.
That is absolutely correct. In Fund 20, if that, if that fund gets used up, like I said, that found, that balance was quite a bit lower than it has been. Yeah, the fund balance, the general fund will have to cover anything that's short.
And until when? Like, when's, when can you make the adjustment on that? You said it's annual?
Yeah, it's annual. Our insurance rates come out annually. And we're going out for bid this year. And usually about middle, middle of March, we have a pretty good idea what that, what that, what those numbers are going to be.
Director Anderson?
Thank you for all of this, Bill. And great job to your team on this audit and everything. I guess I'm wondering, along the lines of what Director Thompson was pointing out, you know, I know some of us had a very painful onboarding in 2023 in terms of making those budget cuts. And so, I understand kind of the bump in, in '24. And I'm guessing those things carried over into '25 in, in terms of those cuts. So, are we leveling off because we are bringing supports, when you're saying kind of bringing in new staff, are we bringing supports back in, or what?
If you remember during, over this last summer, you know, we put some new deans in place, we put some new counselors in place. So, we're spending more than we did the year before. So, that, that gap that we saw with a 3% increase in our fund balance, you know, we're using some of that in that staffing. So, even though our trajectory is still positive, it's going to be much slower.
I thought that was a grant, that those, that wasn't a grant that some of those counselors came in on?
No, a couple of years ago, there is some new funding from the state of Minnesota for counselors. We are using those funds, but it only covers a couple of them.
Okay, okay. And so, what can we anticipate for, because I know we're shooting toward the 10%. So, how long do we think that, I mean, are we going to keep working kind of half percent, or half to 1%?
Well, again, I, I'm always going to bring you a very conservative, especially for our, from the history we've had, our, our budgets are very conservative. Okay, just as this past year, our fund balance is higher than we projected it would be. So, I, you know, I expect some of that still to happen. I can't give you any hard, concrete information till we really bring a revised budget to you, when we really look at how the hiring was in this year, and exactly where they fit in, if it fits in exactly where our estimates were and our new hiring. So, I, yeah, again, I wouldn't expect a 3% increase, where we'd be up to 10 next year. That's, that's not there. But I would expect about a 1% increase. And I would expect that to be about the same going forward, unless we make some type of change.
Director Thompson?
Yeah, I, I think when we saw the, the actuals of '25, it jumped from 6.3 to 6.7 or something like that, or 6.9. So, it was only a .5 difference at the very, on the tail end. But last year, I think I recall you were saying that, you know, our winter wasn't as bad, you know, there's some, we had, there were some staffing...
Yeah, you have, you remember, a couple of years ago, we, we had the year without winter, right? We saved considerable dollars on snow plowing and heating, heating costs. That really helped at that time. I think we had over, it was like $600,000 or $700,000 saving, just from those two items.
Yep, yep. So, so then I think the, the suggestion, or not even the suggestion, but for consideration as the rest of the board, as we go into the budgeting cycle for next year, do we want to be more aggressive in getting our fund balance back to where it needs to be? Do we want to maintain the existing programs and services that we have? What does that look like for, for fiscal year '26 and '27? So, but for now, as it says, it, it seems we are increasing, but it's still, it's, to me, it's flat from what I see, but...
I, I do think the zero-based budgeting exercise will kind of assist in that analysis as well, you know, to see where we're at. But as we're talking about, there are things that you just can't, well, maybe you can anticipate them. But, yeah, what if we lose another $5 million on our, on our insurance fund side, you know?
Director Thompson?
I was, I was just going to say, you know, I just had a recent meeting where they were talking about 360 communities being back in a few of our schools. And like, some of this is really, really highly necessary resources that are coming back that I would like to see extended into all, you know, all of our elementaries. And so, that's why I was just kind of curious. Like, are we just bringing back some resources that we really need? And so, we might be okay with, as long as we're moving in that direction of 10%, and we're not going down, are we just kind of slowly building back? So, that would have been the goal when we made the budget cuts, is to slowly build back things that we can.
Any other questions for Bill?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Director Baker, do you want to take it away?
Sure. So, the last board meeting, I had brought up a resolution for special education based on the RIFs, from the Federal Department of Special Education, where those employees were cut. The board discussed that, and I took to heart what was discussed, and made some amendments and some changes to, well, I just made some changes to the resolution that I had brought forth originally, and then added with it an action plan, which kind of comes back with, the resolution is tied to the action plan that gives some steps, directs the district to do some things, but then also brings back some of the things that we used to do as a district with regards to special education. And I guess when I look at this, I know Director Nicholson and I have talked about it quite extensively over the last, like, week or so. But one of the things that, that we had discussed was that there's not a whole lot that we can do at the, when the federal government makes these changes, we just kind of sit here and wait for it to impact our district, and then try to pick up the pieces of what's left. And while I, I agree that there's not a lot I can do, I'm still going to advocate myself for some of those changes in the things that I can do. But what can we do in our district to make people feel, to let people know that we're going to continue business as usual, and that this is a priority for us? So, I tried to align in that, that plan, some of the priorities that we as a board have undertaken the last several months. I included some metrics for the dashboard that, that we could monitor. I keep track of those metrics already for this district, because we, we as a board, like, we have access, and so does the public. They have access to all this information on the Minnesota Department of Education page. But I think it, it says a lot as a board that if we add it to our metric dashboard, that we're watching those things, too. There are also some things that I brought up that advocacy work, really, that we had done as a district that we're not doing now. And some of those things have some, I would say, some timestamps on them. So, I would like some action on some items. But then I also want to be very clear that these are just items that I threw on as a draft from my lens of working in special education. I didn't discuss with Michelle or any of her department yet, because I feel like the board should say, we as a board should decide, like, what we want to do before I go do things as an individual board member. I'm, I'm part of a team. So, that's kind of where that sits. So, those are just drafts, there's things I threw together without, you know, discussing it further with any of the executive cabinet. But one thing I am pretty passionate about, the one that has the, the timestamp on that is Inclusive Schools Week. The reason that I bring that up is that Lakeville Schools started the participation in that. We were the ones that brought it here. It's a national organization. We had done that for at least a decade. As part of Inclusive Schools Week, we did the inclusion awards, and we did a proclamation every year as the school board to declare it Inclusive Schools Week, which is the first week in December every year. That's a simple advocacy thing, right? We used to do that, stopped three years ago, haven't done the inclusive proclamation or Inclusive Schools Week since then. But what's, what I want to bring to light here is that Lakeville started that, and all of the districts around started doing it because we did it. And then the governor caught on, and he started doing a proclamation for that. And then all of a sudden, we stopped, and everybody else is still doing it, and more people are, more districts are gathering. So, I mean, I, I hate to see something go away that we started, right? Like, that was, that was us. Like, that was a lot of work we put into that.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
Director Baker, what year did that stop?
Three years ago.
Do you know why it stopped?
Change of leadership? I, I mean, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I, we've had lots of changes of leadership, and, you know, so I, I don't, I'm not exactly sure. But I think the other thing that went with that was that the district used, used to support the inclusion awards that the Special Ed Advisory Council ran as part of that. Those things were honoring, like, things that staff members, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, teachers, students, like, did to bring inclusive, inclusion into our buildings and our classrooms. And the communication department did such a wonderful job of, like, telling stories about the things that were happening, and it was so amazing. And that stopped, too. So, the parent group took it over, which was Family Connections, and they've been doing it without the district really backing us and, and having support in that. So, they went from getting, with the district's support, hundreds of nominations every year for this, to down to like, I want to say they had like 20 last year. Because a parent group just working on its own, you know, we, we need to be working together as, as a team on this. So, I know they're gearing up for that again. I know it's something that they've been discussing, that specific PTO, the Family Connections Board and PTO. And I would love to see district participation in that again. Like I said, that's the only time-sensitive one, because I'm looking at, I mean, it's almost November. So, just for planning purposes, I, I would like at least some discussion on that.
I, I want to provide a little context, and Superintendent Baumann can help, because I emailed him to ask some questions after getting the draft resolution and plan. Questions being, are we seeing any loss of funding due to the changes to the DOE? Have any vital services been discontinued here in our district? And if so, are we able to provide those without federal assistance? Has our special ed department experienced any disruption as a result of the changes on the federal level? And is the district currently not abiding by any requirements of the idea? I don't want to steal your thunder, I don't know if you want to address that generally.
Okay, well, I did answer...
You did provide a response.
I did answer the question.
Instead of me reading it, though, I'll let him respond.
So, the fiscal year '26 federal allocation to the state of Minnesota has already occurred. And for, for our special ed programs, I don't see that as an issue. Now, if the government were to, I'm sorry?
There's no budget impact. There's no budget impact.
As of right now, no.
For '26.
And my only caveat, for fiscal year '26, and my only caveat is the government stays shut, let's just say, till April. That might be a different response. And so, to, to that end, all the second and third order issues that were articulated there, we're doing, we're operating normally, but it's not normal, because the hiring of all the positions that we need still is, is lagging. But I've talked to my fellow superintendents, and this is a problem across many school districts. And that's not to discuss the qualitative nature of some of that as well, which is, you know, it's a real thing in, in our school buildings. And when you get into the classroom level, you know, if, it, it just makes things a little bit more difficult. But it's not because we don't have the funding to hire, it's we just haven't been able to get the people that we need. And, and that's having an impact. What was the other ones on there? There was a couple?
Any disruption as a result of the changes on the federal level?
So, right now, no. The, there is a, a micro website out there that the IG's office put out. And in, and I, I went and researched that, and I learned a couple of things. First of all, the MDE... First of all, the MDE Finance didn't have anything to do with it, so that's our first red flag. The second red flag is it's 23-24 data. We're in fiscal year '26, so whatever numbers out there is, is not correct or accurate. And, and I don't mean to belittle anybody, it's just, if you're going to put out information and make, make statements about what the impacts are, just have your numbers right. So, I, that's a little frustrating, and the, the federal government in the, in the US of A, in my 63 years of life, has shut down before. And we, we have been able to weather that. Now, this one's a little longer, I don't think it's, maybe it's the longest yet, I'm not 100% sure about that, but we, we will continue to operate in FY '26. We have other challenges, and I, I'll go back to trying to hire the staff that we need, get the ratios down, and deal with some of the more, the, the challenges we have. And I would say one of the other biggest challenges that we have is our intermediate partnership, they're full, at setting four, they're full, and I, you know, I don't want to go too far off on a tangent, but that has impact on us as well in our school system, and it's true for other school districts. And it can literally, depending on how you've, how those students are set and where those classrooms are, can really impact a building in, in a significant way, and, and we have some of that going on. So, I'm extremely sensitive to it, to the point of I, I'm like, in the buildings and in our classrooms, and I'm observing what's going on and trying to figure out, how can I help? Because our, our teachers need that, whether you're in regular ed or special ed, you know, they need that. So, again, not to go too far off on a tangent, but when you talk about fund balance and you balance that with needs across the system, I think you have to be real judicious about that. So, that's what I'll say about it. I tried to answer all those questions.
That's great, thank you. Director Cameron.
Thanks, Director Baker, for, for drafting these. I think what, what you said, and I think Superintendent Baumann, what you're alluding to is, I, I'm excited about supporting work at the local level the best we can, it seems like something that we have control over. And so, I appreciate especially the, the district plan for special ed that you put together. I think there are elements of it that we could, we could discuss and implement as a school district in collaboration, obviously, with Director Humphries' department. Some of the things that I just want to highlight from what you mentioned that I, I would support, there's lots of things in it, but just some of the highlights are, one of them, I do think adding a metric, a set of metrics to our dashboard seems like an important step that we should be taking to monitor how we're servicing special education students. I would like to, in addition, suggest we look at English learner students as well here as a, as another group to make sure we're, we're providing services for, and so I'm wondering, similar to how Superintendent Baumann came to the board with a, with a set of recommendations, I'm wondering if Director Humphries' department might have one or two or three metrics that would make sense for, for these student populations, and perhaps the, the Special Ed Advisory Council would want to vet those and have parents look at them before they would come to the board, but that's an idea I had there. I'd like to learn more about Inclusive Schools Week, I don't, or Inclusive Schools Network, I don't know a ton about it, but it seems that if it's something that the superintendent and others are interested in, it would make sense to join. Do you know, is there, like, a fee to join it, or, okay? That's, was my biggest question. And then I like your idea of making sure that the district is communicating stories and information to the public about how we support all students, including special education students. I, I'm aware that we have to be careful legally that we're not identifying students in any post or anything that, that they're receiving special ed services, right? I mean, you know this, but, and so, one, one thing I was, I'm aware of is, like, 917 has recently started, like, profiling some of their special ed staff on their social media, and it's great, great stories, and with Michael, what you mentioned about the faces of 194, perhaps, our communications team is thinking about how to profile maybe some of our, our, our teachers and support staff as a way to highlight programming, but then also making sure we're, whenever we're profiling students, like, first day of school or all-school concert, or, you know, whatever the activities are, that all, all kids are represented in, in what we're promoting. I also like your idea about adding some sort of metric to the superintendent evaluation. I looked through the MSBA evaluation that we're considering, I think, I'm not sure, but considering that one, I know we discussed it at a work session, and I didn't see any, I was surprised I didn't see anything about special ed in there, and so, we could discuss as a board, you know, what, what type of things do we want to monitor, and that might align with the metrics conversation from, from Director Humphries' department. But, yeah, I'm, I'm very excited to talk about, like, what can we do as a, as a local school district at the local level to support these initiatives? And, and for me, it's, it's what, what tactical things can we implement, you know, relative, I don't want to say easily, because I know these are difficult things, but, but what do we have control over and kind of promote, promote those actions?
Director Carbone.
Yeah, thank you. Last board meeting, when we started this discussion, one of the things that seemed to be apparent is that there was going to be a financial deficit for special ed, and Michael.
I didn't say that.
Well, it, it seemed like there was some financial strain with funding from the state, and so, so, Michael, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. What you're saying is that there, there's no impact to the fiscal year 2026 budget?
That's where we sit today, yes.
Okay, because I, I just want to make sure, because one of my concerns was the funding, and making sure that everything was funded properly, and it sounds like it is, okay.
Properly might be questionable, but, but that's just as a general matter.
Just to be clear, the funding, the funding shortfall still leaves us with a cross-subsidy in the north of $7 million, and.
Yeah, but that's not.
Yeah, properly was.
That exists prior to this.
Properly was not the proper word. In essence, it's, it's funded, and you could always use more, I understand that.
So, what my, I'm, when I brought this forth, it, it wasn't that the funding wasn't there at the time because of the way that special ed is funded, I stated, like, the funding is there through at least October 31st, for sure. I don't know about any of the other things because sometimes things change and shift depending on how long the federal government stays shut down. There are two differences, though, specifically with this one, is that in any shutdown that's occurred before, employees were not fired, they were laid off. Employees in the Department of Special Education, which is why I specifically said that, were RIFs, they were fired. My concern with those changes within that department is that then there's no federal oversight to enforce IDEA and the laws that govern special education. The issue with that is that nothing is moving, like, we're, nothing's happening on, on any of those, of those issues. There's no, nobody to call to ask for support in that office, and that happens a lot, like, you, there's a lot of gray areas with special education. So, we're left without support, and we're left without enforcement of that law. And the reason that I came up with this plan that kind of lays out some of that advocacy work that we can do within the district, because we're showing we're still doing it, like, we, yes, we have to follow the law, but that doesn't mean everybody will. As I stated last time, there are 43 out of 50 states that have non-compliance issues with special education, even though there is federal oversight with that law. So, those are the things that we worry about, especially as a parent of a child with a disability, it's, it's scary because I know how much it costs to, to educate, and I know that my child needs more support and more specialists than a typical student, and anytime there are budget constraints or things happen, special education is the first thing that's cut. And we saw that this year in Minnesota, when they already started cutting special ed transportation. So, right now, there's a Blue Ribbon Commission on Special Education that's meeting in the state of Minnesota, they had their first meeting, I want to say, on October 8th. They're looking to cut thousands and thousands of dollars from the budget for special ed. So, it's going to happen, it's coming our way, and without those laws to make sure that we're providing quality services, I worry about what the future holds.
Director Anderson.
Yeah, I, Director Baker, I want to thank you for putting this together, and I think this is something, obviously, we should continue to talk about. This has been something we've been talking about since I've been on the board, and obviously well before, that this is certainly a huge area of concern in terms of funding. And, you know, I, I would anticipate that some of these changes impacting the Department of Education are not going to hit budgets until down the road, and so, this, in my opinion, is the time to advocate for something like special education, as well as a whole other host of student needs we need to be advocating for. But I think if we don't advocate, things just get into motion, and that's where budgets are later impacted, and so I would encourage us to think about that. And then I just want to, I, I guess I want to reflect on what that says about us as a district, if we advocate in this way, because one of the challenges we're talking about is filling our special ed positions, and at least from what I've heard from our special education educators, and in terms for educators in general, but they don't have enough time or resources, or et cetera, et cetera, and so, if we are the district who is sitting by and letting these things happen, we will not attract and retain our special educate, education staff. So, I think part of it is advocacy, and part of it is becoming a district where special education staff want to come and work. And so, part of it, to me, is culture, how do we create a more supportive culture? Some, part of it has nothing to do with what is happening at the federal level, and part of it is about making sure we are advocating against what is happening at the federal level. So, I support moving forward with such a resolution.
Well said.
Can I just, I have a question, I guess, because it's, the resolution is highly focused on what's going on at the federal level, but as, you know, the auditor said today, I mean, we're underfunded every year by the state. And Director Baker, you're talking about even this past year in the budget cycle and the changes, you know, cutting more funding from special education specifically, and they're talking about doing it again in the future.
Are you looking at the right one? Because the one that I put forth doesn't say anything about federal funding at all.
Well, it's worried about people being laid off in the Department of Education and that being shifted over, or the OSEP weakening oversight, I mean, I guess.
I mean, that's stating what happened, but then it's saying that we're going to uphold IDEA, we're going to focus on inclusive practices, universal design for instruction, project-based learning, those are all things that happen within our general education environment. We value each student's social, emotional well-being, sense of belonging, access, desire, daily experiences, like, none of that's funding.
But my point, though, my point, though, is if we are talking about funding or things that directly impact our district and our, our special ed programs, I mean, do we throw that in there as well? I mean, if we're talking about advocacy. I mean, I guess my question is, where do we stop? I mean, with the, I understand where you're getting at here and the concerns, I mean, I'm assuming Director Humphries would say that they're going to operate, you know, in, in accordance with the law, regardless of whether or not there's federal oversight. And we still have oversight by our state, you know, the federal government is still there, and those laws still apply. I'm assuming you're not neglecting them, right?
That is correct.
All right. So, and I guess that's why I asked Superintendent Baumann, I mean, is there anything we're missing, given these changes at the federal level at this point? And it doesn't seem like there is. So, I don't know, I, I just, again, from a resolution standpoint, I guess my question is, where do we stop? I mean, it sounds like, as far as Inclusion Week, if we want to do more of, like, an initiative versus a resolution, I don't know that we need a resolution to reinstate something like that.
We don't, but if you check out item number six, the reason that I had the resolution is because it's directing the superintendent to prepare and present an annual special education and inclusion report to the board and the community detailing progress in inclusion rates, service delivery timelines, and student outcomes. Now, again, like, I will leave that up to Michelle and her department to determine what that looks like, they do present to us annually anyway, but I think where that is coming from is that it's going to be included on our data dashboard, I'm looking for those specific items that are in there, and it's showing as a, as a district that we're, we're monitoring that as well.
Yeah, and don't get me wrong, I, I think we're all in agreement that we could put something like this on our data dashboard to track the metrics, it's just adding additional requirements on our district, and there are a number of things here that I just think, at least I need more information on, as far as what, what is intended and what it all encompasses. Yeah, that's just where I'm at. I mean, is it a resolution, or is it just something we need to talk about as far as more of an initiative?
Is it a policy change?
Director Thompson.
Yeah, you know, I, I think we're kind of combining a couple of things as I read, read the resolution and, and make sure that I'm on the same page. It's the one that's titled SPED Resolution Two is what I, was, is the one that I'm referencing.
Yeah.
I believe that's, that was the latest one. I, I am in line with Director Cameron, kind of where you're heading, I'd rather have us focus more locally in the things that we can control. The resolution states to, that we, you know, affirms its, you know, our unwavering commitment to federal laws, which I'm assuming we're already doing, commitment to protecting special education staffing and supports within the district budget, we allocate $40 million out of our budget to it right now and, and cross-subsidize it with the general fund. There are, but I would like to know more of Inclusive Week, and, and so, I'd love to be able to have, you know, you know, Director Michelle Humphries come back and say, hey, what metrics would you recommend to add on the executive dashboard that we can learn? I am, I'm in alignment with English learners having that as a metric or something of that nature, but maybe an overview of what is Inclusive Schools Week, because I, because I don't know what it is, and, because we haven't had it for the past three years. And then if, and again, I want to be mindful that we're not weaving too much into the operations of our district versus governance of our, of our, of our district. And so, if there is alignment by our administration that this is something that they want to do, and there's value in doing it, I'm in favor of that, if that's the direction that what they want to go, that does allocate more resources and time and commitment towards something of that nature. So, an overview would be ideal for me to, to learn more of that. And then lastly, that I see, that, that I do have a question on, it's like, does, does our district ever call the federal office for support, or, because I don't know.
Director Humphries.
I can't say that I have. If we're needing some more guidance or something, it's typically reaching out.
To the state.
To MDE.
MDE, okay.
Who would then reach out to?
Director.
So, lastly, I would recommend that if this is something that wants to move forward, have it on the agenda on the next packet, so that folks can see what is being requested, and then making sure that we, or if you want to make modifications to it, or at the next meeting, if we just get an update from Director Michelle Humphries around the metrics, Inclusion Week overview, any recommendations, and then we kind of go from there. I don't, I don't know if a resolution is, is the path that we should go, so.
I, I did request to have it added to the agenda previous, previously, before the agenda went out, and it wasn't added, which is why it's not included in the board packet for the community, which is one of those reasons why I, I tried to get it added previously so that it would be included. I feel like that's one of the downfalls, that if we don't do that, and then we add at the meeting, then community members are not aware, it creates mistrust because there's no transparency there, those documents aren't included with the packet, and then also, people look at the agenda and determine whether they actually want to attend a meeting or not, so, I don't know, would special education parents wanted, want to come if they would know that it was on the agenda? Probably, but that option wasn't given because it wasn't included. So, just in response to your question about it being in the board packet.
Director Anderson.
I just have a question, and I don't know if this is, who this is for exactly, but do we know how short, and this might be a question for Superintendent Baumann, do we know how short we are on, on special education staff right now? And if we are, I, I don't think we're necessarily unique, but is it, are we similar to other districts, or?
I have a special education support plan that I can get you every, all the HR and finance pieces, I'll have it for you, well, I can give it to you tomorrow. We were doing some refinements on our special ed revenue and expenditures picture over the last five years that I wanted to include in that packet, so I'll get you that. I don't know if, Michelle, if you have a number, we're, we look at it by school, by, I look at it from a ratio. We look at it by school, by, I look at it from a ratio perspective, like, because it's a workload thing. And I look at it from what are, the term I use is UMR, a Manning record or how many folks we are funded for and how many recs are unfilled. I don't know if you have a number on that, Michelle. And then you got to break it down by paras and, go ahead.
I was going to say, I don't have an exact number right now. I would say we are in a much better place than we were last year at this particular time in having to use less contracted services. We definitely have more paraprofessional positions open than our licensed staff, but we have, off the top of my head, like a handful of speech FTE, I think maybe four by FTE open for speech. We have an open OT position and then a couple of center-based positions. By no means are we fully, fully staffed with special education right now, but I can give those exact numbers to you.
Well, the other thing, too, is we're also using contracted services because we can't do direct hire with qualified candidates. So that's another, while it's not, it wouldn't show up as a unfilled rec, it is contracted service and those cost more.
Yeah, but we want to attract staff, right? We want to hire for these positions and that's where I would say it's just something for obviously our board to be considering, obviously our district administration is considering, but we can talk all day long about wanting to abide by the law, but if we don't have staff to actually fulfill the requirements of IEPs and 504s and those kinds of things, we are not abiding by the law. And so then we end up with lawsuits and this is how we end up in a position of not potentially being a place where people want to come and work if our staff that we do have are overburdened with caseloads. And so this should be a collective drive from the school board and the administration to address this gap. And that's how we create a system where we can fulfill the idea in terms of what is required. So I'm just, I'm only thinking that does a resolution like this obviously express a commitment to these ideals and also these requirements and help us move forward to make sure that we as a system are behind?
I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, your statements imply that it's like the district's fault that we can't hire more people. I mean, we have open positions, right? We're attempting to hire more individuals and obviously the problem, you know, caseload problem is a byproduct of there being a lot of open positions, right?
I think it's complicated. Like, that's what I mean about the culture. Is this, the reason why I ask is are we in the same boat as other districts? Do we have the same amount of lawsuits, for instance, related to special education? If we don't, that speaks to a cultural problem here where we are not filling these roles. And if that's a cultural problem, we need to address it. If it's every other district is in the same situation where they are short, very, very short-staffed to the extent that they can't fulfill IEPs, then that's, that's, that's a statewide kind of issue and that's why I was asking that question.
Director Cameron.
When is the next special education advisory meeting? Do you know, Kim, off the top of your head? Like, is it a quarterly meeting? I'm wondering if elements of the plan especially could be drafted with Director Humphries' department using this as a first go for discussion with that group to bring back recommendations. So that's one idea. And then I'd like to make a motion. Can I do that? I'd like to make a motion that the Superintendent Baumann, with consultation from cabinet, especially Director Humphries, makes a determination on rejoining Inclusive Schools Network, including the celebration of Inclusive Schools Week, for a recommendation at the November board meeting, whether or not the school district should join it or not and what would be the rationale for doing so.
So I don't know that we don't have a recommended action on the table to make a motion, but Superintendent Baumann, do you think, and I guess Director Humphrey, do you think timing-wise, that would be doable?
Well, I don't really need a motion because we will figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, I think everyone's saying they'd like to hear more from, you know, Ms. Humphries, sorry, but we're probably going to pull you back in to get some more information from you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together two things. We'll put together, I'll get you the special education support plan. That'll have a lot of the information you're asking for and I will prepare a presentation for our community so they can get a better sense of where we're at and get that on the agenda ASAP. At least from my perspective.
In our conference, Kim, who else is members of the network, do you know, or maybe not conference, but?
It's, it's a national, it's a nationwide, it's just inclusive schoolsnetwork.org. Prior Lake does it, 196 does it, Burnsville does it, like, all of the districts around us in the area are doing it. And really all it is, is it's a proclamation that comes before the board saying we are declaring the first week of December Inclusive Schools Week because within that week, they choose that week because it's National Disability Day on, I think it's the Tuesday of that week, which is December 5th, I think, this year. I'm trying to think calendar-wise if it's the 5th or the 6th, but that's the reason they chose that week, that's what they do. And then their website, it's free to, it's free to be a part of the network, it's free to get all of the resources. They have lesson plans that you can do individually with classrooms all the way up through 12th grade. They have activities that you can do in a school. The way that we set it up in the district that I work in is like the elementary teams all work together across buildings and they make like a PowerPoint slide, you know, that they can pull up during morning meeting every day. They have simple activities in it, like here's a sign language thing of the day. They have like a video, they have kids sharing stories. Last year, we had one class that learned the Pledge of Allegiance and Sign Language and they were super proud of that, so that was on the video one day. It's just different ways to incorporate kids in learning and learning about others. And so like all the things to participate are there. I think the biggest thing that we did as Lakeville was the Inclusion Awards, which that parent group took over and are doing it. So all they really want is the district to say, hey, we want to work on this with you and support the communication about how to get the link out so that people can nominate people. And then we used to do this big thing when, when they would recognize the educators and the students and the staff members that won, like the superintendent, members of the school board, they would come to that person's classroom and surprise them during the day and say, it really was just a certificate, that's all it was. But you know, just that recognition that the things that you're doing in your classroom are important and that they matter to all of these people that showed up today to tell you during your, during your day. And honestly, like, that day, like when we would show up and do those awards, it made my entire year because the students were super excited to honor their teacher and it wasn't like we're buying them anything. It was literally just a certificate for, you know, thank you for being an inclusive educator or, I think the ones, the last time we did it, the ones that I felt were so amazing were the students at North, where we had a student at North that was music, he was in music and he was teaching students in the special ed room how to drum. And so they followed him around and he was teaching all these students drumming skills. Nobody asked him to do it, he was just doing it. He had an open period and he was working with kids and it was just amazing to see that video. Now there were confidentiality things with that and we had everybody that, communications department ran that, everybody signed like a confidentiality thing that they were okay with their student being on the video, but I mean, those were on our district communications site. So that's where we went from like us all being involved in it to like crickets, so.
Director Cameron.
Well, it seems like for me, and I know Superintendent Baumann, you already said this, but rejoining that in time for this season seems to make a lot of sense, especially if others in our conference are doing it, so I support that. I think the one thing I'll just say with awards, I run awards for University of Minnesota System. I think it's important, I love that the parent, parent group is involved in soliciting and reviewing nominations, that should continue. And if the district's going to be involved, I think it's important that we have a vetting process or a review process, right, just to ensure that if we're, if we're giving awards that, especially for people external to the, to the district, like community members, that, that there's just a review process to make sure that a lot of things are followed regarding safety and whatnot, so, yeah, thanks.
Director Thompson.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of the motion just to hear more about what it is and how we'd implement it or how it would be integrated into our schools. I do want to be, one of the things that I always think about is that, you know, when you come into Lakeville schools and you're a student, like, it shouldn't matter, like, and so I want to be mindful that while if we're putting the spotlight on certain demographics or certain types of kids or whatever it may be, like, I'm not aligned in that in general, philosophically. Like, if you're a student, you're a student, one, two, three, and if you don't know how to read and you don't know math, like, that's, that's what we need to get to and solve. And so, but I am open to learning more and hearing what it is and how we can integrate it where it makes sense, but again, we've got 12,000 students, that's what I see. And so I want to make sure that I understand that.
I speak to that real quick.
Director Baker.
I understand where you're coming from. It's been an advocacy journey that my family never anticipated would happen. My children were the first kids within our family that had disabilities, so we had to learn and we had to teach everybody else about that. And I completely understand that as a parent of a typical child, like, your kid goes to school, it's no big deal and you don't have to worry about it. And I'm so glad that you don't have to worry about it. For us, that wasn't the case. Like, it's not a guarantee that our kids get education just because there's a state or a federal law, doesn't always happen. The Individuals with Disabilities Act was enacted at the federal government in 1975, which is only 50 years ago, because states weren't doing that. So if you talk to your parents, your grandparents, those kids were in a different building, if they were even allowed in the building at all. The Americans with Disabilities Act, 1990, that's when that happened. So that was just to have, let people have access, not only to their community, to their buildings, to their, the buildings that they pay taxes on, but also employment. That wasn't very long ago. And, and like I said, I know you're saying there's 12,000 other kids, but I'm going to give you another statistic. One in four people in the United States will experience a disability at some time in their life. That's 25%. You never know when that's going to happen to you. Might be a car accident, might be a stroke, might be a heart attack. You never know what can cause disability to happen, but it can happen to anyone. And I think that the reason that I put this advocacy resolution up is because it's so important to us as parents and educators to know that it's going to be okay. Like, we're, we're going to work to follow the law, we're, we are taking this as a priority, we are understanding the significance and the importance of these services because it is actually life-changing. It is life-altering, life-changing. Without this district and the paras and the speech pathologists and the teachers, I can name every teacher he's ever had, every para, everything, without those people, I really don't know where my son would be today. He went from a diagnosis at 15 months old that, Kim, I just don't think he's ever going to be able to go to a school. You probably will never hear him talk and I remember exactly what the doctor said. He said, you'll be like a picture on the wall to him. There will be no interaction whatsoever. Don't even count on that. Got a second opinion, a third opinion, they all said the same thing. He graduated from Lakeville area schools. He graduated. He got accepted into college. Granted, he's doing a trade school, doesn't matter, he's successful, he's independent, he's doing what he wants. He's a healthy, happy individual who can contribute. Life-changing. Where would he be if he wouldn't have had those educators? I don't know. And so that's what this resolution means to me. And I know that there are lots of other people within this district that would feel the same way. When I look at our special ed population, 19% would probably feel the same way.
Director Thompson, then Director Cameron.
So I wouldn't be too, too quick to judge as, as I do have two children that have learning disabilities. And I would have to say that the staff that we've had to work with at a fantastic elementary school has helped both my children get to where they are today academically. And so, again, there are students in a variety of different spectrums and ranges of their skills and, and I just want to make sure to acknowledge, like, we have 12,000 students. And again, they all need to learn how to read and math, read and do math and science and the core academics. So just be mindful of how, of, you know, of that.
Yeah, inclusion means everybody, so.
So, just one second, okay. I think we're, I mean, I'd like to wrap this up. I think the general idea is we are going to have Director Humphrey and Baumann come back and do a presentation and provide some more information on these ideas at a future meeting unless that's not what I'm hearing as a general consensus, but go ahead, Director Cameron.
Yeah, I agree with that, Matt. I think, Brian, to your comment, I just need to say that I think it's important that we as a board remember that we service all kids however they come to us, right? And there are some kids, or, I think our, our metrics discussion has highlighted that there's many ways to assess how a, how a student is growing and developing in our school district. Common assessments through Fastbridge or MCE is one of those things, right? But it's not the full story for any kid, but there are kids that are, have different needs that we need to support where getting up to a grade level for reading or math might not be the goal for that child and their family. And we need to respect that and still provide a quality educational experience for that child, even though it doesn't align with the metrics you're trying to hit. So, I just want to say that.
All right. Everybody good? Move on? Until a later date. Board member reports. Director Anderson.
Okay. Yes, I want to highlight some good things happening in the district. So I attended the Lakeville Arenas Board Meeting and that went very well. There was a, a review for our manager of the meeting that went very well. And so things are plugging along there and within budget. And then attended our first Wellness Council Committee or Wellness Council Meeting this week. Had a nice presentation from our superintendent about the budget, or about the upcoming levy. And then some things just to consider, so one thing that came up in this meeting for, just to raise the awareness on this, it sounds like there might be a policy sitting somewhere for the policy committee on the wellness policy. So that is something that we probably need to kind of bring front and center hopefully sometime soon. And then there was really, really good discussion on what we could be doing in terms of advertising, advertising around student wellness. And so I think people should look forward to, well, one thing, we have a really great student from Lakeville North and we're trying to recruit from Lakeville South as well. And I think we're going to get some students involved in some videos related to sleep and screen time and then also looking at helmet safety. So those little bikes that these kids are riding around, probably illegally, we decided, but those, we want to raise awareness. One of the things we were talking about, some of the parents, is like, what is the age for the scooters, the electric scooters? Everybody should know it's age 12, so you're not supposed to be riding those scooters before age 12 and those bikes. You are supposed to have like a real, what you would call it, permit for that or something? So I just want to stop all these kids on the road and say something, but I don't. So there's going to be some good educational things coming out of this committee that I think we should all look forward to. So, great stuff happening.
I guess I'll go. I took my rotation in the third grade class at Cherry View, which was a lot of fun. If you haven't gone there yet, I would encourage you to do so. Led some reading groups. Yeah, it was great. Ms. Banovich is doing a great job under challenging conditions and I know her goal was just to provide an example of this is what teachers deal with every day in our district. I had a good opportunity to chat with her a little bit about that and then with Mr. Hallberg as well. So, yeah, I appreciate them opening up their school and classroom. Director Baker.
So just to update the board, the Public Engagement Committee will meet tomorrow at 6 o'clock. That's posted on the district website. The next board engagement opportunity will be November 7th at CMS at 11 o'clock. And just for public awareness, the board has been touring schools within the district that are over capacity. I'll let Director Cameron talk about the tour that we did Friday at Highview Elementary. So we got to see the conditions within. So we got to see the conditions within that building.
Yeah, Kim and I were able to tour Highview on Friday and it was great to meet the new principal. She's doing a great job. Excited to have her in the district. And, yeah, I mean, we saw overcrowding, right? That we all have heard in discussion and from other conversations. So I think the important thing to, for the community and for the board to know is rooms that were designed for certain functions, like the STEM room, is now turned into a classroom. And so STEM is mobile in the, in the facility. And then there's a gym, the DAPG gym to service special ed students is turned into the art room. And so DAP services are being offered primarily right in hallways. Is that correct, Kim? And then we saw there are cases where there's, in particular, a second grade classroom that's meeting in a very small, small room. And so, yeah, it's over capacity. And so I think as we discussed with Emily McDonald and the principal, there is, the good news is that through boundary adjustments, we'll, we'll be able to address the elementary overcrowding, at least temporarily, for the next foreseeable future. So, yeah, it definitely, it definitely needs to happen, but it, good news is we can solve it.
Anyone else?
I have a couple other ones, sorry. Last night, the Early Childhood Advisory Council met and I just provided some updates from our board meetings over the last couple cycles. I just want to say that group is just a powerhouse of really volunteers who run a lot of amazing events for our early childhood families. And so that a lot of their meeting is spent planning for, for the events that they have. And then also Dakota County Libraries is always there, talking about the partnership between early childhood and our library system. And so that was great to hear about last night. And then Policy Committee will meet this Friday on Halloween at noon, from noon to 1:00. And just to update the board quickly, Matt, Brian and I will meet, but one of the things we'll go over is an audit that MSBA did for all of our policies. And they have a recommendation on how we might proceed with policy updates. And so we'll, we'll meet about that on Friday and then can give an update to the board at our next meeting.
Director Cameron, can I ask a question? Is a costume required for that meeting?
I put a PS in the email and costumes are optional. I will not be wearing one.
Anyone else?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you, are you chairing the Policy Committee now? Because I may have like some questions about some policies coming up.
I'm help coordinating the meeting. I'm not the chair.
Okay. So who?
Director Thompson is still the chair.
Okay.
So feel free to shoot emails to Director Thompson.
I will.
And he can share them. Superintendent Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent's report. So first thing I'll tell everybody who's listening, skip the line by voting early on the Capitol Project's levy renewal. District residents can vote at their convenience here at the district office, right on the other side of that wall. And you can do that through November 3rd. On Election Day, we will have all of our polling sites open from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening, or 8:00 PM, at your designated polling location. And you can go online to ISD194.org/vote in order to figure out where you would go to a polling site. Second thing, oh, sorry.
You can even vote on Saturday, right? This Saturday?
That is correct.
At the district office.
Here at the district office. From what time to what time, Kim? 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And vote your conscience. Thank you. Second thing, last Wednesday on October 22nd, I had the opportunity to present at the Annual Lakeville Chamber of Commerce State of Schools Luncheon. The presentation highlighted the district's operations and how our schools have been performing. And I was able to provide an overview of a student and staff demographics across the district and a detailed look at some of the things upcoming on November 4th, which is related directly to the levy renewal. I would like to share this evening with all of our many, many viewers, a short video to share the Lakeville area schools' impact by the numbers and detailing how we ensure that academic, social, civic, and personal readiness for every student is inculcated into our system. So if I could have our master director, all right, he gave me the thumbs up. Your kind attention, please. This school year, we're embracing the theme of All for 194 and living out our core values, which guide everything we do to ensure the academic, social, civic, and personal readiness of every student. Over the past decade, our district has seen significant growth. With new homes and families joining our community, we expect that growth to continue. Our district is becoming more economically, racially, linguistically diverse. Today, 16% of our families speak a language other than English, representing more than 80 languages across our schools. Each day, our dedicated staff helps students grow academically, socially, civically, and personally as they work toward graduation and life beyond. To support every learner, we provide a wide range of educational and social emotional supports. Many students benefit from individualized support such as English learner programs, special education, and academic interventions or accommodations. 30% of our students participate in advanced programming, allowing students to explore their interests and take on new challenges in their academic journey. Our students' success is reflected in an average GPA of 3.3 and an average ACT score of 23, a testament to their hard work and the commitment of our staff to academic excellence. Our graduates are ready for the future. According to the most recent data from the class of 2022, 93% of students graduated, 17% entered the workforce immediately, while 79% pursued post-secondary education. Behind the scenes, a dedicated team of more than 2,800 staff members serve students every day across 19 facilities, making Lakeville area schools the largest employer in Lakeville. Our transportation partner covers 10,000 miles daily, safely bringing 9,000 student riders to and from school. In our cafeterias, we serve over 2,900 breakfasts and 8,600 lunches each day, fueling learning and growth. Technology plays an essential role in learning. With more than 17,000 iPads and devices in the hands of students and staff, we are preparing learners to thrive in a digital world. At the same time, we continue to invest in comprehensive safety and security measures, ensuring our schools remain safe, welcoming environments where students can focus on learning and growth. Beyond the school day, our facilities are community hubs. This year, community facility use is projected to reach nearly 200,000 hours, a reflection of how our schools bring people together for learning, recreation, and connection across the Lakeville area. Strong connections with our community through transparency and positive relationships, including community engagement and feedback, are essential to making our mission possible to support every student's success. And it's clear, our community is proud of our schools. In the 2025 survey, 89% of community members gave the quality of education at Lakeville area schools an A or a B. The district received its highest scores in the last three years for satisfaction. Overall, our community believes we spend taxpayer funding effectively, do what's right, make good decisions, and involve the community well. Our community also says our leaders are doing a good job and that our teachers are fantastic. From classrooms to cafeterias, buses to ball fields, and the stage to the stands, the Lakeville area schools' community is united in ensuring the academic, social, civic, and personal readiness for every student. We are all in, all together, working toward our mission and vision. We are all for 194. So thank you for indulging me with that. And then I just would like to say to our educators that are sitting here tonight, thank you for coming. We appreciate you. That's my report.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Bowman. We have no recommended actions, so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Unless you guys want to hang out.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I think there is a motion and then if Director Carbone says a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All for 194.